And we'll reconvene and welcome everybody on cable and everybody else here in the room. We did have a closed session ahead of this, so we'll now reconvene an open session and call the meeting back to order and do a little shuffling just as we don't have, I don't think, everybody here at this point in time. So we will move right on to our consent agenda items for the day.
Oh, I had the vouchers and I will make a motion to approve them.
Okay, so there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Everyone in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post? Okay. Any community comments? Anybody here for community comments? Hold on, I might have a community comment. Nope, I don't. Oh, I was waiting for one, but never mind. We can move on to our administrative reports then.
Okay, the first administrative report this evening is our annual report, sixteen-seventeen seclusion and restraint report by Ms. Wesley.
So Dina, does the clicker work?
I don't have the clicker.
Okay, it's gonna be hard to do this without it, but I will try.
Okay, so this is the time of year where we report out on Act 125, which requires that we report the seclusion and restraint numbers for the district and applies to both special ed and to regular ed.
It's in a PowerPoint presentation. It's done this way so that the public can take a look at it as well. But I'm gonna go through pieces rather quickly because this is something that you've heard every single year. So again, a physical restraint is a restriction that immobilizes or reduces the student's torso, arms, legs, forehead, and a seclusion is an involuntary confinement to a particular area. I want to kind of remind everyone, we're now working with four-year-olds and sometimes in order to keep people safe, you have to do a restraint with a little four-year-old. And there have been occasions where they have wanted to run out into the street or things like that, and that counts as a seclusion. The district is really very good at reporting and all of those incidences are on file within our district. We let parents know when we have the need to do a seclusion or a restraint. So if you'll just move on a few slides. Dina? Here are our numbers. The total number of seclusions and restraints this year was thirty-six. The total number of students involved were eight, and the total number of students with disability, without disabilities was two. So there were six with disabilities, two without. I'll have you move to the next slide. The whole purpose of doing this report is for the district to really take a look at what are we doing as far as to minimize seclusion and restraints and ensure everyone is safe. And so we do nonviolent crisis prevention training. I've talked about that with you every single year. We have just finished up our training. If you go to the next slide. Mr. Gold doesn't know. I put his picture up here today. He is our new trainer and he did a really great job. We did our training last week, Thursday and Friday. We have another training to do. All special education staff, both certified and par educators are trained in seclusion and restraint. And basically that is how to de-escalate students and if there is a need to do a seclusion and restraint, how to do it very safely. The next slide. I'm not gonna go through this because I go through it every year and if people, if the public is interested, the information is there, but it just tells the purpose of our training. And again, it is nationally recognized research-based training that Josh got trained in and we feel very comfortable with that. There, in addition to this, if you go to the next slide, Dina, there are specific initiatives other than just the nonviolent crisis prevention intervention training. And that is, I'm very pleased, I think we see a movement of developmentally appropriate teaching, teacher-student ratios. Some nice things have happened since the 4K program. I think the administration has been very good about ensuring that our ratio of students and young children is adequate. There was a behavior interventionist hired at the elementary last year, which is a really critical and good thing to have. That person does breaks with kids that are not special education students. So our little people need more movement breaks or ways to calm down, is what I'm going to say. The next slide is we evaluate the structure of the day, and this is in all of our buildings. Alternative to nixing recess. You know, when kids get into trouble, the common thing to do is to say, oh, you lost your resource, your recess. And what we really have done is we've created alternative recess that's very structured, looking at what kids can do successfully and not do, with a lot of adult supervision. So that's one of the other things that we're looking at. The next slide talks about making sure that we have an appropriate sensory diet, and that's where we go back to the interventionist at the elementary, all special education staff are trained in making sure that kids are getting what they need during the day. Sometimes they need calming activities and sometimes they need activities to kind of really boost their metabolism and move a little bit more. And this just pretty much talks about that. Within the district, we have a system where we do unscheduled breaks, which are things that usually are not all that exciting to get out of class for, like coloring, reading, things like that, but helps kids to kind of regulate themselves. The next slide is we also do scheduled movement breaks, and that has really helped our children as well. And then the final thing, oh, I have one more besides this one. We are educating our families and students about screen time. Screen time makes a difference with how kids behave and really wanting people to know that that needs to be limited if we're going to see a decrease in undesirable behaviors in school. And then the last thing that I'm excited to tell you about is we were able to train six teachers this year in Reconnecting Youth, which is a research-based program, helping kids set goals to be successful in school. So, do you have any questions? Okay.
Thanks, Cheryl.
Next we have, next on the agenda.
We're still on the administrative reports.
Yep.
You actually jumped ahead on the one, so, yeah.
Oh, sorry. Okay, just a couple of things I wanted to report on then is a couple of things that are coming up. Obviously, we had, it's the time of year where we have new teacher in service, and that was held today. Next three days will be teacher in service and all district staff in service on Wednesday. And we have a couple of projects going on, projects that are wrapping up. You'll hear much about the high school family consumer science project in a little bit, and then also at the middle school, the special ed bathroom that was put into place is wrapping up. We also will have this coming next week, actually. It is this week. The soccer dugouts are framed up and we'll get, there's a donation from the soccer booster club, and so a concrete floor will be put in the dugouts. Also, we've had a lot of work on illuminate education, which is a new program that is being used, and there's teacher training going on, and we'll hear more about that as it relates to student achievement and documenting test scores of our students. And lastly, we have quite a wellness initiative that will be going on that Ms. Dina Babcock is helping to lead for our district. That's all I have at this time.
Mr. Dersfler has a report too. I just didn't have the right agenda up. I apologize.
Okay, so Mr. Dersfler?
Okay, and I'm gonna ask Mrs. Larson to join me because, believe me, as I said to her earlier, if you saw my skills in the kitchen, you'd understand why I am not teaching these classes and she is.
Are you going to like monitor every class for a semester?
I do not.
Pick up anything?
Yeah, that's what I mean. There you go. I always wanna know who's made it when they come taste testing time. Who made this? If I don't say no, that, give you some perspective, if you've been to the high school, there is a lot going on in the family and consumer ed hallway. This facility, which is now getting close to being called new, was originally built in nineteen-seventy-six. And I'm gonna give you a little snapshot of what nineteen-seventy-six was. Okay, that was the year that Apple computers actually was invented. So we've come a long way. Fifty-nine cents a gallon for gas. I don't think we're going back there. I think that was Orla Lee's senior year?
It was.
Okay. Emily was not alive. Some of you perhaps were not alive. It's the year before Star Wars, the first one came out. So that's a while ago. I was six. Keith was just thirty.
Still looking good, too.
There you go. Well played. And in style corduroy suits, holy cow, and polyester. I don't know if any of you still have that in your closets. If you do, you probably wanna do away with that. And lastly, average home value in the United States, forty-three thousand four hundred dollars. So if you can get it, pay for it at that time. So that's nineteen-seventy-six. What we're about to share with you is, per your request, some of the curriculum that exists in that class and how this facility is gonna help us make it what it can be. We have the best FCCLA and the best family and consumer ed program in the state of Wisconsin, with the best instructor, with the best kids in the program, with a very average facility. We're limited in what we can do. We're not limited now. Now the sky is the limit. And if you haven't been over to see what we've got there, think of just one thing. What is this going to do for our kids? Because this isn't about Mrs. Larson or myself or about any of us here. It's about what opportunities can we not provide our kids post-secondary? Because after all, our mission is to send every single one of our kids to a post-secondary school of their choice. And many of them want to go into these types of careers. Now they definitely can with the proper training via the best facility. So we're gonna walk through a little bit of what you see here in the facility and what we're going to do for classes. Some of it remains the same, but think of it in a much newer and a much better facility. So we've got the following classes up in the corner. You've got all of those classes. What we're gonna feature is what's changed based upon the new facility. You're talking foods, foods two, food science, desserts and pastries, and lastly catering. When you have those types of classes, you have to have the right facility to go with, particularly classes like catering. We don't have a catering kitchen. Now we do. Now we can actually cater to district events and events in the Amory area. So if you're interested in events being catered, contact the schools. We will see what we can do to work with you. Yes, this is a for-profit industry we're looking at as our family and consumer ed business model, but we're not looking to do anything other than make a profit, but with giving kids an experience of a lifetime. And that's what this facility will allow. So the next slide, if you could please. We have a CTE Academy at Amory High School, and part of our CTE Academy, I'm not gonna talk about the other three. You've already heard about ag. You're gonna see something about tech ed next meeting. What we're gonna talk about today is the CTE Academy in the area of family and consumer ed. We're going to cater. That's the foundation of what we do. You'll see here that we have all sorts of youth apprenticeship opportunities here and elsewhere to do that, and there are certifications that are associated with it. Next slide, please. These are all of the, historically, all of the businesses that we have partnered with. And what I'd like you to notice is right down the middle, nearly every single one of them is Amory. And where it's not Amory, they simply didn't have someone to partner with. We wanna go local, and we have done that for the longest time and we're gonna continue to do so. We wanna put our kids in local business to have an experience, to support our community, to support our schools, because we are, after all, in this together in getting kids ready to be successful beyond here, because that is our mission. That's our mission as a district, not just a high school. Next slide, please. So as a district, I'd like you to look at what the youth apprenticeship opportunity provides for our kids. If you look at lodging here, health services, those are all youth apprenticeship career cluster opportunities. If you look at the, just the portion of yellow, we can't do that with the facility that we had from nineteen-seventy-six. Now we can, because part of lodging and tourism and health services, catering is part of that. And now we can provide that opportunity to our kids where we couldn't before. These are majors in college with careers waiting for kids, and we have the people in town to work with to make this happen. Next slide, please. So in catering, I'm gonna have Emily talk about what are we going to do in catering down the middle.
Yeah.
It'll whet your appetite for all the things that you're going to learn, and then the pictures, of course.
So catering is kind of...
So you should pop up to the microphone, so, thank you.
You have a good teacher voice, but yes. Catering is going to be awesome, but they will have had to have a foods class before this. So they learned the food safety, all those different types of things. So we'll get into cooking right away. And as you can see up there, they'll have breakfast foods, appetizers, soups, sandwiches, entrees, and they need to learn how to garnish because we sometimes eat with our eyes. So if they look at it and it doesn't look appealing, no one's going to want to eat that. But you know, we're gonna make it fun, too. So we're gonna be catering for other people, but they're also going to have to think about their lives, too, and put it in perspective. So you know, I'll give them a little scenarios. They'll get a little card and they'll maybe be catering for a football party. They'll be catering for a baby bridal shower, things like that, because we do need to tie it back to them if they're not going into the career of that, too. But we all do. We eat every day and we obviously cook, too, so.
Our next course? These are both, these first two are new courses to...
These are new, yep.
This course alone out of four hundred and fifty kids, seventy kids picked this course.
I think it was, I think by the end it was eighty-two, because I kept adding. You know, but I asked them. I didn't change the curriculum. I just said, you know, what do you think about this? And I had it called pastry and baked goods, which is what a lot of family consumer teachers around call it. It's the same thing, only the kids are like, Mrs. Larson, you need to call it pastry and desserts. And it went through the roof. But we also called it that because cheesecake is awesome and we love it, and so do the kids. And I think I'm very good at making that as well. So, and that's one of the things. I would love to cater with that, and the kids want to as well. So that's where the desserts came into there, too. But the pastry, you know, doing breakfast foods and scones and donuts and all those things. So should be great that we can tie into our academy as well. We're very good at doing different cupcakes. I had some kids already test this out a little bit, so I had them be little apprentices for me. And I had four of them and they were trying and sampling, and that's maybe why the numbers were so high, too. They were around the high school, you know, sampling different food items and things out, and the girls did a phenomenal job with that, too, the four that we had. And it's fun and very tasty. Yes, next one. Foods one is the class that I actually teach the most. It's the basic one where they're learning about nutrition, fruits and vegetables and dairy and eggs and quick breads and all of those different things. And so it's just kind of the basis of it. We talk about my plate. We look at their diets specifically, so, and how much sugar is in food and different stuff, too. So it's a fun, good first class for them to get started in. Next one. Foods two, this is currently my favorite one to teach, but I think that that's gonna change a little bit, too. Obviously, you know, I asked them, I said, what skills, what standards and things do you want to learn about? And the boys were like, steaks, we want beef, we wanna learn that. And we learn that. We learn how to cook a proper steak. We learn about beef. We learn about proportion sizes, things like that, different cooking methods. We have Italian and Mexican and Chinese and a bunch of different cultural stuff, bringing it into it. Meal management, we actually have an iron chef in this as well. And I love bringing community members in. Judges come in, chefs come in from our community, so they can see what the kids are doing, too. I absolutely love working with our business communities. It's so much fun. I don't know what I would do without them. I call them. I ask them for their expertise on different things if I have a question or if I need to borrow equipment, which I hopefully won't need to do anymore. Things like that. It's a great communication that they come in and help me with, too. McDonald's is actually on my advisory board, too, and she comes in in my careers and technology class and does a job shadow, or, sorry, not job shadow, job interview with them, and it's kind of, it's kind of fun to bring them in that way, too. So, next slide.
And lastly.
Food science. Mr. Derek Meyer, the ag teacher, and I co-teach food science. We feel paired together. We are just a dynamite team. So it actually is, I think I spent fifty-nine pages cross-referencing them, so it's actually science credit with DPI that they can get that with, so that there's all the different things that we talk about back there. We actually have it every other year that we normally offer it, but it's a really great hands-on class. It's just kind of edible science, which makes them excited while they're learning different things. I was really excited. I had one kid say, Mrs. Larson, I know what fermentation is now, even though she should have already known it, but things like that. So it's kind of, it's kind of fun when they, they learn different stuff.
Okay, these are the standards that are met. I'm not gonna read all these to you. This is standards-based. We have Wisconsin standards in the area of family and consumer ed, and these are the standards that this work will meet.
Mr. Dersfler, can you use the mic?
Sure.
That way on TV they can...
Got it. Okay. All right. Next slide, please.
That was it.
That's it. Just a brief update in regards to the facility itself. At the beginning of June, gutted the entire facility. Anything and everything that could be moved out was moved out. Some of it ended up in the dumpster and some of it's in somebody's home or shop as it stands. If you saw what was there, that's great that it's there and not here any longer. Everything has been primed for appliances. Flooring is in as of late last week, early this week. All of the appliances are going in here in the next day or two. All the electricity's patched in. They were plumbing today. The, it spilled over into the service door that goes with the custodial area. That wall has been moved there. That's painted and all ready to roll. So we are but days away. I told Emily the other day, the work may be done, but you, you may not be ready on Monday because there's still a lot of work that she has to do and she has to wait till they're done. So the last thing I'd like to say on behalf of Mrs. Larson and the high school and the high school kids, we want to thank you for making this possible, because this was a very, very much overdue item in the high school. So thank you.
So, yeah, first off, thanks to the community, because they're the ones that voted for the referendum that made it possible. So, yeah, so I just had a question. Is there a plan down the road to do any sort of higher education credits on this? Is there any way to do those yet, or is that not available?
It is available in some areas. Our philosophy at the high school, whenever we can transcript it, we're gonna do so. We've transcribed every single course with one exception in tech ed that we can transcript.
So we're already, as far as we can go on that?
Absolutely. We are. It's a matter of matching our curriculum with them and being out in front of that curve as much as possible. We have forty-one transcripted credits, some of which can take place in family and consumer ed.
Will this program bring us any new apprenticeships that we'll be able to bring through the additional programs?
Yes, with Pro Start, if we get into that, Pro Start's pretty heavy-duty curriculum and training and so forth. That's where we're headed, but we could not even begin to talk about doing Pro Start with the old facility.
Right, but on year one, that's not part of the plan. That's part of the growing, but that is a plan?
Correct.
Because I think that's a big deal.
That is a big deal and that is part of the plan.
I mean, the more, the more kids that we can get out apprenticing so that they're, when they graduate, that they've already had that experience and that we're helping. Again, I think I speak for most that when we do these programs, when we can get kids helping out in their, in holes in the community, that really ties that partnership together.
It does.
And I think it's really important.
There is no replacement for experience on the job, none, which is why we're so adamant about getting kids out there.
And that's what we've heard from our industry and our businesses, is we just don't have people to fill these spots. So if we, as a district, can do that while we're educating people, I think we're serving our community in a different way, too.
Correct. We're doing it in ag with hydroponics, aquaculture. We're doing it here with catering. You're gonna see next month with home building, and then the month after that, we're gonna talk entrepreneurship.
Great, wonderful.
If you want a hands-on experience and you're a high school kid, if you're not Amory, you're in the wrong place.
Great.
Because we've got it.
And the youth apprenticeship, I have been working with that, too, more this year. And we had forty out of the fifty-nine in hospitality and tourism, and they're almost all working with the local restaurants and things in town.
Fantastic.
So the need is there. And like I said, forty out of fifty-nine, money well spent with this. I promise it will, it will be dynamite. And NFCCLA, too, they are so excited. We've won the Tappan State in culinary creations, I mean, out of every other school district, a couple of times. And we're just not there in the other culinary aspects because we just need a little bit more training. Like I had one get fourth place, and I'm like, oh, if I could just be cooking on a gas grill, I could show you a little bit more, instead of sending you somewhere to have them help and do the training. So I really, I think it'll just grow, like at times.
Great.
Thank you again.
I think on our end, and we've talked about this a little bit, but to make sure that when this is all done, that we have some sort of a community open house so people can see that.
We actually have something...
October tenth.
Oh.
It's already on the docket.
Wonderful. That'll be great. It's unfortunate we can't get our state representative and state senator in, like, in the next week so they can see the benefit of community referendums.
We have one of our representatives, Adam Jerko, is speaking at Veterans Day in November, so we could certainly show him.
Unfortunately, it'll be after they vote on some of these goofy things that they have going on in Madison and it'd be great to show what...
That I cannot control.
It would be great to show them why communities have referendums and what they, how they benefit and how the community gets to, gets to control.
As I say to seniors, there's many things I control, but not goofy state legislation.
Yeah, trust us, us, too. All right, well, great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Okay, we may have other administrative reports. Anything else?
I just wanted to report back on the PLC conference, because we had seventeen staff members attend in July for three days, and you guys supported that conference. It was a three-day conference. It was excellent. The staff was excited. The whole, the whole year is going to focus on professional learning communities, and the whole premise behind professional learning communities is making sure that we meet the needs of all students and that all students learn the essential skills that we identify through our curriculum. So we've done some great work under the leadership of Orla Lee, and we're going to continue that work in our PLCs, and the conference was so very well worth it. So I want to thank you for giving us that opportunity.
Great. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Anything else with you, Mr. Cook?
Covers it. Thanks. All right, we can move on to our informational items. First, the board retreat, retreat. Mr. Cook?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring up that we have had fall board retreats in October, I believe, in the past. So if board members would look at your calendars and just think about September, October, or November, whenever it works out that we can get together to start looking at long-range facility planning and just long-range planning for the district as a whole. We've gone through the two-year process of strategic planning, of course, the planning for and passage of the referendum, and now we want to continue to look at the future of the district and set a long-range plan and facilities plan and start to investigate what the next step would be. Great.
Okay.
You'll reach out to us with some tentative dates?
Yeah, I can give some proposals. Probably the best way to do it, if you can shoot us four or five, we can usually find one, sometimes. All right, great. Letter of credit?
Tonight, I'm here to mention to you that I spoke with Kathy Graham from Bremer Bank, and this is just to inform you of a, kind of a vehicle for our money and to let you know what we will be doing. Currently, we have two accounts, our main accounts, our general checking and our debt service account, that are attached to what they call an execu sweep. And automatically at night, it automatically just sweeps the money out into a higher interest-bearing account, and then it sweeps it back in, hence execu sweep. That was really the way to go. You all may remember the LGIP, the Local Government Investment Pool, was a manual way to do it. Execu sweep came, Bremer was able, or banks in general, were able to match the LGIP rate, so an execu sweep was just much easier. Now, we're needing to move away from an execu sweep, because they can only offer point one-eight percent interest. So what we've decided, or what's been proposed, is called a letter of credit, not a line of credit, but a letter of credit. They would be able to offer us point nine-one percent interest. And what that would mean on a typical July, this July, we earned about a hundred and eighty-one dollars in interest. If we were in and using the letter of credit, we would have earned seven-hundred and ten. So annually, we earn about three-thousand-four-hundred-and-sixty dollars. By moving to a letter of credit, approximate, we have about eight-thousand-five-hundred in earned interest. So it's really kind of a no-brainer. The strange thing is, we're actually going a step back. It'll be like the LGIP. I will actually manually move the money instead of this automatic sweeping. So it really is kind of a little bit more work on my end or Paulette's end to watch, you know, daily as we move these. But the interest rate difference is just one that we can't deny and can't refuse. And it's really, you will see nothing different. It's just a little bit of a manual way that we'll be transferring the monies. And so debt service, which we only use twice a year, we did go ahead and switch that August first. Our general checking, which has a lot of ins and outs, we're going to phase in October one. And so I just wanted to let you know that we're gonna change our mechanism a little bit, but for the better.
It won't freak out the auditors or anything, right?
Oh, and I did send this letter of...
With the segregation of duties problem that they always have?
Well, I sent this letter of credit to the auditor. I met with them after the audit was complete. I met with them after the audit was complete and asked if this was okay. And I got a letter back that it is perfectly, it's a wonderful way to do it and of course, earning more interest is always a better way to do it.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Starting October 1, we'll go back to kind of manual transmitting, I guess, but it'll work.
Great.
Any other questions? Tyler? Athletic logo?
Let's see. I drafted a memo that I'll pass out, I'm not going to read it verbatim, but I'll summarize I asked that this matter be placed back on the agenda because of the strong negative feedback I had witnessed since the release of the image of the new Amory School athletic logo. Right away, the feedback was negative with regard to both the logo itself and the perception that little effort or public input was involved with the logo's creation. Of course, we board members might have different opinions about that. I personally thought that, and I believe you guys agree, by putting out a contest to the public last May, having several entries, forming a committee and voting, I felt that was sufficient to have the public input. But as we know, when it comes to public relations and public opinion, perception can be a reality. Therefore, I did feel that it was important to revisit this. I guess I think logos should be approached with a great deal of caution and forethought. They are important and they do matter. The actual public comments that have been shared with me suggest that the feelings are strong. People are frustrated, people are bitter and people are angry. These came from parents, these came from alumni, these came from business owners, teachers, coaches and students. This is more than the typical, you know, Facebook negative comments. I mean, there, there were a lot of very, a lot of people that were very upset. Initially, I thought it would just fade, but it hasn't. And I think that we owe a duty to the public to do a great job with the visual representation of our athletic program. I believe that the logo is our public image and it should be the very best that we could do. Amory strives to be the very best. And I know logos are subjective, I mean, we're not going to find one where everybody, that everybody likes. I'm just saying that it possibly should be revisited to either spruce it up or tweak it here and there or, or something and maybe put out to the general public as their opinion and get, get votes of the people of the community. So.
Were the comments to stay with the one we had, the shield and not changing anything?
No, they all liked the idea and I agree that we do need a simplified logo to put on athletic gear. I mean, I'm not a graphic design artist, I'm not an artist, I can't submit an entry, but I can recognize a good one. I think the logo we have is okay, I think we can do better. I looked at companies, I mean, there's so much online. There's, you know, with the internet, there's lots of designers at good prices that design school logos. I looked at hundreds of school logos, high school logos in particular. They all had a little, you know, they had the letters and maybe a little, I don't know, whatever their mascot is. I know we can't use, you know, the mascot of a warrior, but for, there were a lot of other schools that had warriors with just like a little arrowhead or a tomahawk or even just the letter A or a distinction in color or a distinction in dimension. I don't know, I'm just saying, I think it could be better.
Did anybody else just take a look at everything that was coming across Facebook?
I saw some comments on Facebook, but I, that's all I have seen, other than just comments on Facebook. I haven't, nobody's contacted me or I haven't personally heard of anything other than on Facebook. So, I guess I wasn't aware that there was such resentment or disapproval of the new logo, but.
Yeah, I haven't, other than Facebook, and I, I'm really cautious about taking any sort of board action on what goes on on social media. I do know that if you want to look at it mathematically, the number of people that were negative on it compared to the positives were about, it was significantly more on the positives than the negatives. I know that the people that were negative about it were fairly vocal, but again, there was a lot more vocal anti-referendum, there was a lot more, you know, anytime somebody doesn't like something, that's when they really chime in. I'd be real careful, I think myself, just my opinion, about A, revisiting it because we made that decision and the time to have that discussion was a month ago or two months ago when we made that decision. I know there's been a significant amount of money spent already by not just the school but by outside groups and booster clubs and whatnot to incorporate that, including our football helmets, including Russ, the new hockey uniforms that they opted to do. I know there's a number of booster programs that have already incorporated it. I know that the volleyball team has it on their logos. I know that over 500 shirts were just printed for all the staff members. Golly, if we revisit that, it's going to be an expense. I also know what it costs for graphic designers because I employ one and I don't think it's necessarily the best use of money. And I think maybe if we can look back and say, what did we do wrong? Maybe what we didn't do is educate exactly what this logo is. It's more of a font than a logo. Majority of what's going to be used is the Amory and the Warriors in a significant way because we had 500 different fonts that were used. You know, it's not replacing shields. I think it looks pretty cool actually on the new helmets, on the shirts. I, the, I saw volleyball did one, my business didn't do it, so, but it was really cool the way it was in. The soccer boosters actually just, and I can talk only because I'm a printer, just sent us an order and they had six different designs to choose from and they turned them all back and said, no, we want one with the new logo. And that's a group of at least 20 people and 60 kids, 30 kids playing soccer. And we said, oh, okay, well, we can incorporate that. No, we like it so much, that's what we want. So, I think to base any sort of board action on things that we hear on Facebook or social media, I think we run a real slippery slope on there. And I, and I think, looking back again, I think we handled this correctly. We sent out four or 5,000, no, it was more than that.
7,000.
7,000 letters to every mailing address in the, in the entire school district, telling them that this was going on, giving a chance for public input. It went in every family folder. It was talked about in a couple of different board meetings. I just, I think we did really well and you're just, the one thing I've learned in the design business, you're not going to make anybody happy all the time. And if you can get 70 or 80%, you're pretty doggone, pretty good, trust me, somebody that we, when we have to redo logos on a constant basis, the one problem, what we always tell people is, don't send this to a committee because you're never going to get a consensus on it, ever. So, well, well, I think it's a matter of personal taste. I also think the danger of revisiting something that we just did a board action on two months ago is a slippery slope that, you know, I'm only one person, so y'all can decide, but, but I wouldn't be in favor of it.
If I may address the board, I just wanted to mention Tracy and Josh are here this evening and they have more information that I, I believe will be helpful regarding the number of responses. And I did read all the Facebook postings that were available at the time and I did hear, have heard some comments. Get out in the community quite a lot and there was, there was some concern about it, but also I heard very positive remarks. In fact, at the Music on the River a month ago, right after the action was taken by the board, some alumni from over 50 years ago from the district were really upbeat and positive about it. So, I have heard both sides of it, but I'd like to defer to Tracy and Josh if you would like to hear the information.
I'd like to hear that, sure. But it's up to you all.
I mean, like I said, it's just an informational item, so I.
No, it's a good, we can discuss it.
I think it's a good discussion to have.
Yep.
Yeah, I think, I think a couple of things that are really important to note is on the athletic uniforms itself, you know, the shield was very difficult. But, you know, you're talking to someone who had to go home and tell his wife who created that shield 20 some years ago that we were going to remove that. So, and my wife understands too as well on the uniforms, how difficult it was to put that into place. The other thing is, you know, 20 some years ago, we removed the tomahawks from our basketball court and anything that had a connection to that whole warrior thing. And so, you know, we've had people say, well, you need to put hatchets on there, you need to put a spear on there. Well, that, that, that was, that decision was made 20 some years ago that we can't have that in there. And we did actually send in, after our committee went through this process, 38 different entries that were all kept completely confidential. I was the only person who knew the creation because I had to put together the PowerPoint for the staff members, nobody else knew what was coming through. And when we narrowed that down and got to a couple of things that we really liked, we did send off some things that had a spear involved and just because we wanted to see what it looked like, but we also knew that at this point, we really couldn't go that way. We wanted something simple and that would look very nice on a uniform. And if, do you have the picture with the helmet? I think that's a really nice.
Yes.
Oh, and the other thing is, people have talked to me about mascot, mascot, mascot. And I really feel like, I don't want to say our hands have been tied, but they've been tied. I mean, we're warriors without them and, you know, it's not that we're anti coming up against anyone else, it's just that's where we're at.
Hi. The other.
The other big thing is our school colors are officially red and white. And a lot of people had been running with black and, and then that's fine except for, you know, we are red and white. We like to use black maybe as an accent, but I think the helmets that we did this year, I think that really looked sharp on that helmet myself. And I'm sure the shirt would look better on Tracy than on me for you guys to see what this looks like, but we do have a number of other things out there that I think if, if people can see these, I, I think they will. I wore a hat to the golf course the other day, my football coaching hat, and a couple of people said, wow, that's not that bad. Yeah, I think it looks pretty good.
I don't have a whole lot to add, some of the things that I kind of had in mind that we wanted to talk about, you've already mentioned. I think just the two big things, we need to keep our purpose in mind. Maybe some people who don't like it don't realize what that true intent and purpose of this was. And it was to come up with something very simple and very clean and timeless that we really could work with because the shield as it stands is very detailed. So, when you use the shield, all you can use is the shield, you can't do anything around it. With this AW, we could kind of do some things and we have kind of played with some different things. The idea of the spear running through it, we actually had that when I first, when our designer, who got the idea because we mentioned it to her and she worked it into this AW. And at first, I really liked it, but then what we did, like if you were to go back to the original one there, Dina, no, the other way. When we showed it next to the shield, then it didn't work. It looked decent standing alone, but it didn't work next to the shield because there was too much going on. And that seemed silly, but it, it really didn't work. And I was excited when I first saw it, put them together and said, it doesn't work. And the other idea with the spear is now we're opening a whole new can of worms as to what that spear and arrow means and we're going backwards. And so, we need to stay away from that. But I guess the main thing is, like we've heard more than once, when the shield was rolled out, people didn't like the shield. Our designer told us that no matter, that logos are tough, schools, municipalities, businesses, logos, logos are tough and there's always going to be some discontent. But I think what we need to do is we need to give it a chance. We followed a specific process. I think people need to see it, we need to use it while it's already being used because of the time of the year we approved it, it's been printed, like you said, a ton. It's, it's out there. We need to support it and we need to see how it can be used and we need to move ahead. We need to give it some time. And I think people, I think people will like it and accept it. And like Darren said, it's a slippery slope to suddenly turn around and we need to give it time. We gave the shield time and it worked, we need to give this time. That's it.
Thank you. Yep. Anybody else, please? So, it, it, okay.
I would agree to give it time. I mean, that's my opinion.
Yeah. Any change is difficult.
For the record, I have nothing to do with it. I have a business that prints, but I was not, let people know that, that we, we had nothing to do with that, so there's no conflict of interest involved with that. It's printed.
Anything else you wanted, Chelsea, on that or you good?
No, I just wanted to put that out there.
Can we enter this into the minutes then?
Yes.
Great, I'll give you that so we can make sure that that's in the minutes as well. If you want to bring it back, bring it back. And that was a conversation, I should just, on a side note, it's kind of related, you know, as board members, we can add anything if you want, there's, whatever you want on board agenda items, that's your call and it's not mine, so, please.
Well, it was, you know, like I said, it was requested by numerous.
Yep, well, hopefully they, hopefully there's some better.
Information regarding the logo, so I said I would bring it up.
Hopefully, there's better information now available on that, so hopefully, we still won't make everybody happy, that's the nature of the beast. Okay, anything else? Great, we can move on then. My computer's dead.
On to action items then?
Yeah, hold on. Can I see the action items? Oh, here we go. All right, insurance.
Last month, you'll recall that we had an informational insurance item and we brought it back this month as an action item. I got ahold of Mr. Leadholm and we can, whatever you would choose tonight, add to our policy. I will just sign a statement that says we haven't had a breach of our data or any kind of claim from the beginning of our policy, July 1 until now, when they would reinstate it. So, I just need to let him know of your desire. I had come initially with the data compromise in cyber, we had added 50,000, go to 100 and then there was discussion possibly that that wouldn't be enough. Could we go to 250 or 500? So, you can see the amounts, the 250,000 or 500,000 would be an additional to, to what we already have. So, if you tonight would let me know, I can get ahold of Mr. Leadholm and make sure that it's on our policy.
So, I would like to make a motion that we add additional $250,000 in coverage for $675.
I'll second. So, that's, that's $675 annually, right?
Uh, 1,300 annually, I think, right? Because it's for each.
And data compromise, there's actually two policies.
Two, okay.
Two policies, so it's 1,348 annually.
And then we can revisit this.
Then we can revisit it next year.
July 1 is our renewal date.
Yeah. I think we can sleep a little bit easier knowing we've got a little more coverage on that, at least I can. Anybody have any discussion on that? All's in favor?
I.
Opposed? Okay. There you go.
Thank you.
Next, the Academic Career Plan Board Presentation.
Okay, I promised to get through this quickly and I won't even rip on Keith.
I don't think you can do that.
Okay, I'll try. The Academic Career Plan that you're about to see a model for, it's a, by law, a 612 model, but it truly covers K-12. This is a mandate that we have to have approved before we get to the school year. So, just in the nick of time, the Academic Career Plan, Slide 2, if you're good, please. The Academic Career Plan, or ACP as it's more commonly known, is a student-driven, adult-supported process in which students create and cultivate their own unique and information-based vision of post-secondary success. They obtain information in order to set up their post-secondary success and they develop the planning skills in order to realize it. So, in other words, we know that kids need to go to college in order to be successful in this world, but we have to point them in the right direction, not just educate them. So, we're educating them, we've been doing that for the longest time. Now, we're formally through a plan, pointing them in the direction of a post-secondary choice with all of the information in hand. This is what I need to have in order to go to said place. We have sort of done that, but now we're formally doing that through this plan. All students, you're talking 4K all the way through senior year, you're talking all staff that work with all kids, parents and guardians of kids that are in the school system are involved, and lastly, your Amory community because much of what we do involves them. When you're talking about. When you're talking about 4K through grade five, you're looking at a different set of activities than you would be at the middle school and the high school. And they're not talking about academic career planning in second grade with the guidance department. That's not what happens. You're looking at talking about careers in a general sense and sort of a specific sense. I know, for instance, when my kids went through 4K graduation at the daycare that we're in, both of my kids put down that they wanted to be a garbage man. So clearly, they talked about being garbage men. I'm not sure if that's where they'll end up. Maybe there's an academic career plan for that they're not aware of? I don't know. We'll find out in the next fifteen years, I imagine. In six through eight, it looks a little bit different because now you are talking about a academic career plan. We're using Career Cruising, which is a free site that we use as a district, that you can go and do the work that is necessary. It's career inventories, and you're linking up with a variety of other resources about careers. And we're also going to use the very same model in nine-twelve. So kids are not changing a system when they get to high school. They're doing the same thing for six years. Because the academic career plan should build for that six years. They're not going to know what they want to do for a living when they're in seventh grade. If they do, great, but they probably won't. And they'll probably change their major when they get to college. But at least they'll be armed with the resource to know how to work through that system. Because many of the things that they're going to learn are applicable to all walks of life. If you'd like the next slide, please. At the high school and at the middle school, you're looking at doing it during warrior time, which is our academic intervention time. Each of our warrior times at the high school is, in essence, going to become an academic career planner. It is their responsibility to sit with a kid and help them select the classes that they need to take to get to the career that they want. Don't just arbitrarily pick them or show up with a blank list and pick classes at random to actually have a plan. Careers class, that's a mandate at the high school. You have to take it in one of our areas of CTE. That's been the case now for probably almost five years. Guidance activities, again, K-12, highlighted mostly in six-twelve. School-wide activities, we have a career day that takes place at the high school. Field trips, the middle school does field trips to post-secondary to prepare kids to know what that life is like. Guest speakers, we have guest speakers of all shapes and sizes come in for a career day. And also, apart from that, in FCCLA, and FC, and family and consumer ed, and ag, and business, and tech ed, we have speakers in all the time. In collaboration with parents, in the form of parent-teacher conferences, that's going to start taking a different shape. We're going to start talking about academic career plans with them. And I think they're going to find that more valuable than just running through grades. Oh, they need to do this and this to get to that university? Yes, that's what we need to have you know so they can get that done. Please help us. And lastly, community involvement. We're going to need them to put our kids in places of work. Our labor market needs are clear. If you look at the labor market research, it is very obvious. Local employers have indicated to us, and this is not just local, it's Wisconsin and it's also nationwide, they're looking for technology and engineering-related skills. They're looking for marketing and sales skills. They're looking for machine operation. They're dying for machine operation. They're looking at healthcare needs, professional services in accounting and service industry. Emily talked a little bit ago about forty-one of the fifty-nine youth apprenticeships being in the service industry. That's what our market is telling us. And the market research is very clear. If you could move to the next slide, please. Here's what local employers are telling us. And that was the manufacturers' roundtable, all the manufacturers in the area. And they've actually said very clearly the following: attendance and punctuality. They said they rarely send someone away, employment-wise, fire them because of their performance. They usually have to send them on their way because of attendance. And that's something we help kids with K through 12 to make sure that they prioritize that which they prioritize, such as your work when you get off into that environment. Initiative and motivation probably goes hand-in-hand with attendance, integrity and honesty, quality and customer service, teamwork, listening, ability to learn, and ability to apply new concepts. And that last one is what they want the most. The ability to take information that we're delivering to you and then solve a problem with it without us having to tell you, "Here's what you should do to solve it." They want thinkers on their feet. And that's what we're seeking to prepare here as a district. So the Academic Career Plan in its basic format is this. Who am I? As in, what are my skills? What am I good at? What am I interested in? Where do I want to go? I want to stay local. I want to go to River Falls. I want to go to Claire. I want to get out of Amory, and I want to go to the East Coast. I want to go to a two-year school. I want to go to a four-year school. I want to go to the military and then come back. That's the, where do I want to go? How do I get there? This is the part they're missing. They're not picking classes in a systematic way to get them to the place that they need to be. They think they need this, and they actually need this. That's where our help is needed. We need to help these kids by pointing them in the right direction. And lastly, do it. But the last part, they're reflect and revise because the plan you set forth is probably not going to happen. You're probably going to have to circle back and revise that plan and try again. But you'll be a little smarter the second time around, perhaps. What does it look like? So you're looking at academic goal-setting, looking at learning styles, inventories, test-taking strategies, career clusters, which are all the stuff that takes place in CTE. You're looking at setting goals, selecting the right courses that meet those goals, college visits, transcripted credits, all of the advanced standing credits like AP, and then actually conferencing with people that know best. We're educators, not just of math, science, English, and social studies. We're educators in all areas because we live some life, and sixteen, seventeen-year-olds or twelve and thirteen-year-olds have not. So we can provide them with some wisdom. Next slide. And this is our graduating class. So this is the most recent class that's headed off into the not-so-distant future. Good news to report, for the very first time since we've been tracking kids declaring post-secondary intentions, we've been tracking that since the early nineties, this class is the very first class where a hundred percent of them declare they're going to a post-secondary school. A hundred percent have actually set a goal to do that. Now, I know, you know, not everyone's going to go and finish in the same fashion they thought they were at the beginning. But now, we've at least had them declare that as an intent. So it's at least a possibility. And there'll be some zigs and zags along the way to get there, as you know. But now, we at least have them having set that as a goal and actually sign down the dotted line to do it. And that post-secondary intent can be one-year school, two-year school, four-year school, or military. All of them have declared that intent. Because not having a plan is not an option. That won't work. Any questions for me? We need your approval on this because this is, after all, a state mandate. So if you'd be a skin, that'd be great.
I love approving a mandate. And it's just such an ox...
Well, I guess we could try and not approve a mandate and see what their response would be.
The mandate is to have an academic career plan.
Yes. Let's do it after the crazy November stuff.
Yeah, whatever. It just, it always gets me. Whatever. So can I get a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Anybody have any questions or comments, concerns, otherwise? All in favor? Aye, opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
If you quit buying the kids' garbage trucks for toys.
Well, they've got them at home. We'll see what happens.
Yeah.
So, we can move on. Next, to talk a little bit about the press box.
And I will defer to Mr. Gold.
Well, if I can actually start with that, please. So this actually came several months ago. Somebody from the community contacted me and may have contacted some others, I don't know, and just had mentioned about Mr. Grunland. And was there any plans on honoring his years of service? And had given some ideas. So over the course of the past number of months, we've been, you know, had informal discussions and whatnot. And so this, Mr. Gold can talk a little bit more about it, but I find it ironic that Mr. Grunland was not here, as he passed away ten days ago, as we're discussing this. So it's just, it's kind of melancholy at that point in time. We were talking beforehand that I think all of us that went to the Amory School District that are on this board had Mr. Grunland for a teacher. He probably announced most of our athletic games at one point of time or another. He pronounced my name correctly. And he actually, if I can give a quick eulogy, Mr. Grunland was somewhat responsible for the first twenty-five years of my career as he spent a lot of time encouraging me into public speaking and communications, which is what I went to school for and spent the first half of my life in a career. And it's because of he and Gary Ganji that I actually got into the career field that I did. So I owe a lot, my family does, to Mr. Grunland. I don't know if anyone else wanted to add anything, but... No? Go ahead.
And even to go back a little further, I think it's important to note that there were, there were things in place before Sherm did pass away. I had been in contact with him throughout the winter sports season after he basically said, "I'm not going to be able to work this winter." And we found some replacements for him. We tried multiple times to get Sherm up here in January and February to honor him. And I did a weekly call every week to check in and talk. And of course, he was just a dear friend, too. So it was always fun to talk to him. And we tried to get him to come up to the school. And yeah, I'm just, I'm not feeling very strong. I can't do it, he would always tell me. And then finally, we got to the last week of the regular season. And I said, "Sherm, I care. And I, you know, I want to talk to you all the time, but I've got an ulterior motive today. I need you to know that we really want to honor you and recognize you at a game. It's important to the community, to our, our kids." And he was, he was touched by that. He said, "I'll call you back tomorrow and let you know how I feel." And so Pam and I kind of sat around on the office, kind of, you know, we offered to go pick him up, to bring him in. And he decided that, you know, he just really wasn't feeling up to it. He was feeling too weak. And so, but I think the important part is that, that Mr. Grunland knows that we did want to honor him and recognize him. And actually, the plan, if we do, you know, with the dedication, we have set a tentative date of September 8, home football game versus Ellsworth. And even Mr. Cook and myself had been in conversation with Sherm's family before he passed away. And they were actually hoping to actually bring him that night in the wheelchair. And the plan was for him to be here that night to see it. So, you know, the family's on board. We have secured, Ponthorst has, their community has generously came up with some funds to, to cover this. And we have some other donors that have said that they want to add to this as well. So it's a nice way to honor Mr. Grunland.
Forty, from what I, what I read, and I don't, I'm going to be wrong on the date, but forty...
Forty-six years.
Forty-six years of announcing from the press box, Amory Warrior Athletics. And from what I read, he only missed two games in forty-eight years. Now, we have had lots of teachers and lots of coaches who put in lots of years in this district. But I don't think there's anybody that's even equivocal to forty-eight years and two games. And that's not just one sport. You know, for years, he did everything here. So I just, I just think it's a, it's a fantastic honor and absolutely deserved myself.
Yeah, no doubt.
Yep.
A class act.
Sure. Yeah. So can I make a motion that we dedicate and rename our press box at the, at the Amory Athletic Field to the Sherm Grunland Press Box? I'd make that motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed? Okay. All right. Next, we have, it's what I told Dina. When you go down a rabbit hole, sometimes you find out that the rabbit hole has tons of different tunnels in it. So one day, we were looking, but we talked a little bit about purchasing, doing a purchasing...
Policy.
Policy. And it brought us to looking at other policies, which we found lots of things that needed to be changed. So we can go through these one at a time, just highlight the changes.
So we have seven different policies we're bringing forward. One is actually eliminating a policy. But so one, and the track changes is on here. So you can see the recommended deletions and additions to this policy. Basically, this makes it okay to use the website for the board, for board policy development.
Because we don't think we have a handbook anymore.
Yeah. There is one. We have three-ring binders, but it's just kind of bringing it up to the speed of this day and age. And all these policies I'll mention, too, do require a second reading. We do have a legal opinion, which, on all these policies, with mostly just minor comments, but an email I received on Friday from Dan Mallon from WASB. So it's possible there's one policy that there may be more substantial change. The board, we may consider bringing it back for another first reading. But otherwise, if the board's okay with it, they could be second readings next month.
Okay.
The next one, Dina, is Staff Handbook Evaluation Revision. And again, you can see the track changes. It basically says in whole that the board may do what they've done, which the last few years since, since Act 10 in 2011 has passed a handbook without going through the policy first reading, second reading. Board action is board action, and the board action can do what they do, which has been just passing the handbook. Doesn't need a second reading. Next is regular board meetings. There are regular and special board meetings. And this is basically just to update to the time change, which is 6:30.
Yeah, but I had a comment on this one. So we have, we meet on the third Monday of each month during the school year. But we actually set those dates at our annual meeting, don't we? So shouldn't we change the third Monday to time, date, days determined at the annual meeting?
Yes. And also, one attorney comment was, if you, the way it's stated here is a time designated by the board. There's no default time.
Yeah.
So we may want to make a default time as 6:30.
But I'd get rid of the third Monday, just in case some board in the future decides they want it to be on the second Monday or whatever else. It's...
And of course, a board can always call an additional regular board meeting.
Right.
Or a special meeting.
But I, like I said, I live in a world where policies and protocols save people's lives. So we need to make it as...
Yeah, we'll, we'll make those changes and bring those back to the board. And agenda, preparation, dissemination. This is about the two working days prior. This is more back in the mail age before we had computers and electronic. So shall make, shall be available electronically. We use the website. We use Board Book for the electronic communications. So it's bringing it up to speed. And the next one, then, is development of teacher and student handbooks. And there were quite a few comments by the attorney on this. And so I want to review that. And he suggested language, but it basically talks about, this is just to address student handbooks.
Yeah. The purpose for changing that was just to remove the confusion because we have the employee handbook, and then we have a student handbook. But I, I know that there's some statutorial, what you have to, the way you have to call it, right? Is that what they're saying, the semantics of it?
Yeah. I'll have to review WASB's
Okay.
comments on it and bring it back. Then the purchasing policy, which is what started all of this, was, is updated here. And we've got, basically, we're eliminating the old policy, rewriting the wording of the whole new policy. Oh, sorry, this is the one that... Okay, so there, there's the new language of the policy. But since we already had a 672 bidding purchasing requirements policy, this is basically just replacing the old language with the new language. And there was a committee meeting.
Yeah. So maybe, I don't know, if you want to share what we went through on that?
Just tuning her up and trying to, you know, emphasize, you know, the, the localness of our purchasing and bidding process to make sure that there is something definitely set up for us to, for the guidance of the staff and that, when they're looking for purchases, to make sure that we exhaust the local community or process.
And I think the other thing that we, we were trying to, Keith and I were trying to accomplish on this was, and we've all been on the board now enough years, that what's the, one of the main things that comes is, do I need board action for this one, or don't I? This should hopefully clarify and give some more guidance to building principals, to people in departments about, do I need to have the board do this? Is this administrative? Is this something I can do with in my department? How much? We always used to say, "Well, what was the amount?" Well, we never really had it written. It was just always understood or an unwritten rule. So hopefully, we, we clarified a lot of that. There's nothing really earth-shattering on here, but it, it removes a lot of the small, I hesitate to say the word nickel and dime because every penny that we spend is important and we need to be, have oversight on. But some of the smaller things, it allows for a lot faster way for building principals to exercise the expense of their budget and brings really the things that have major consequence or are outside of the budget. That was the other thing that we put in there. Anything that was outside of a regular budget, we have to approve. But if it's inside a regular budget, then if it doesn't meet a certain dollar amount, just go buy it. Don't worry about the board doing it. But then it also provides guidance about, if I'm buying something for my building, that is in my budget, about going out and getting those bids and RFPs or RFQs and, and giving, making sure that we're going out and attracting our local businesses and our local contractors first or as part of the entire situation. So we don't just go out and, and forget about them in those situations. So I think, yeah, that's what the plan is in that.
And then the last policy is actually something that we just, was addressed in the general six- the general 672, so it stays, as it states, "Omit in lieu of new policy 672." And as you can see, some of these policies have not been reviewed since the early to mid 90s, so they were due to be updated.
Well, the one funny thing is that if the state law were to pass that they're running, this would make this whole, we'd have to revise it again, but we're just plowing ahead that smarter heads will prevail in Madison, and they won't pass that dumb law, and we'll be able to have local control over our bidding and our procurement policies. If the state decides they know better than the local communities, then we'll have to redo it, so. How's that? Okay? So, take a look. We got till next month, right? And the last thing is the referenda restrictions resolution. What?
We did close session personnel.
Oh, do we want it to close personnel right now? All right, so we can, Mr. Cook, can I take a motion to approve the closed, the personnel contracts and retirements? Do you want to make?
No.
Yeah, we have two retirements I'll just mention. Sylvia Ween announced her pending retirement this October after many years of service. And how many years, Sylvia?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two years for Sylvia. Did I say Sylvia? I meant Orley.
For Sylvia. I knew what you meant.
And then, also, at the elementary school, Marie Knudsen, who has been in that position as playground supervisor for how many years, Ms. Meyer?
Oh, boy.
I think it was over 20, like 25 years? A lot of years at the elementary. So, two people that are retiring that have been in the district a long, long time. And we have two resignations, one being a English teacher that we hired in April, took a position at a Minnesota school, will be assessed, the breach of contract clause, and other new employees. You can see all of the different coaches that we are hiring. And then, coaches and a bus driver, a couple of bus drivers, and then also, a new 4K teacher that we decided with the numbers that we have, as the numbers increased through the summer, we held off, we waited and waited, and now, this puts our, our ratio at a much more reasonable rather than, rather than into the 20s, down to a more reasonable number, about 16, I think we're about 17, 18 now. Hopefully, numbers keep going up. So, we have a new 4K teacher and 4K para, as well as other food service positions that we're hiring as well.
We could, since we're on cable and news, we could probably mention that we are in pretty good need of diesel...
We need a diesel mechanic. Mechanic actually doesn't have to be a diesel mechanic, but a mechanic at the bus garage to work on our buses, to do oil changes, to do minor repairs, and all training will be provided. So, we are in need of a mechanic. We are also in need of more bus drivers. We are in need of substitute teachers, substitute paras, clubhouse employees, so...
And we still have an academic behavior interventionist position. It's five hours, 8 o'clock to 1 o'clock.
Thank you, Ms. Meyer. So, we have quite a bit of employment available at the school district of Amory, so please pass, pass on the word and do apply if you have interest.
Might as well use it when we got it. All right. Can I get a motion to...
So moved.
Is second?
Second.
Any discussion? That was our paid commercial in the middle of the board meeting, right there. All those in favor? Aye opposed? Okay. Yeah, so, referenda restrictions resolution, well, I wouldn't read the whole thing, because there's a lot of whereas.
I will.
But maybe you can explain the legislation that's out there that would be the easiest.
All right. Just in general, there are six bills that have been proposed by certain legislators who have attempted this in the past, legislature, Dewey Strobel in particular, and Kapenga from that northeastern, excuse me, southeastern part of the state. These resolutions restrict, they would affect both a jet referendum and authorize, they would authorize debt in referendum to exceed revenue limits. It would include eliminating recurring referendum to exceed the revenue limits, limit the duration of non-recurring referendums. In other words, it would reverse the decision that the community here in Amory just did by voting, and there are some excellent points that are made, that are made in this referendum, excuse me, in this resolution on referendum restrictions. Revenue limits were imposed on school boards in 1993, and if school boards, it was understood that if school boards did not receive adequate revenues under the revenue limit, it could always ask its voters to approve a referendum. Other points that are made are that school boards propose referendum because they believe in doing so as in best educational interest of the students and the communities that they serve and represent. Voting, voting is not a difficult process, and voters in Wisconsin are intelligent. They do not need to be protected from themselves. If they do not support a referendum, they can vote no. Also, points that are made in this resolution in opposition to referendums, the school district of Amory has adopted resolutions in the past. They believe in locally-elected school boards that have control of its local fiscal affairs and opposes scheduling, opposes limits on scheduling referendum. Therefore, be it resolved that the school district of Amory, Board of Education calls on Governor Walker, Senator Sheila Harvstorff, and Representative Adam Jarko to oppose this legislation that would further curtail the already very limited set of revenue options available to Wisconsin school boards. So, this is the resolution that's being brought forward for the board to vote on tonight. Once again, there are six different bills that are being proposed to limit referendum authority, to take away local control, and apparently legislators believe that they in Madison know more than what the local electors do as to what the school district needs, and that's just not the case. If they would retroactively remove the recurring referendum done 10 years ago, that would mean a million dollars out of the district's budget that the district relies on, and the school district just passed their $1.9 million recurring referendum for operations, so it would limit potentially that referendum to just five years. Now, would they make it retroactive? That would be not only bad legislators, but I would dare to say, bad legislators making bad legislation, taking away local authority. That's my narrative.
Okay.
So, the board can discuss or vote on and then sign the resolution that's passed.
Can I get a motion to accept that resolution?
So...
Is there a second? All right, now, any discussion? It's just ridiculous. I think, I think in the end, none of us want to have referendums, but the state has left absolutely no alternatives. And this was enacted, I believe, by Governor Thompson at the time as a way for the district, for local communities to take control of their local property taxes and their local education. Now, what we've seen is some, and it's, it's the same pack of people that have been pretty anti-public school for all along, who have been in districts that have passed referendums that they did not support. So, they decided, "Well, if we can't win at the ballot booth by voting no, then let's just pass laws to make it illegal to even have a referendum." That's how dumb this thing is. So, I would strongly support that we pass this. Again, I don't know if they do any good, but at least it puts us on record, so. Anybody else? All right. All in favor? Aye opposed?
Okay.
Yeah, we'll sign up after we're over here.
My thing keeps dying out on me here. We don't need to go back into closed session. So, with that, I will take a, anybody else, anything else on the agenda? With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Dale, is there a second?
Second.[1794.53]